Welcome to the regular session of the Town Council. Cape Creek residents, Monday, August 1st, 2016. The rule, please, Carrie.
Councilman Esser.
Here.
Councilman Bunch.
Here.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lamar.
Here.
Councilman McGuire.
Present.
Councilman Ford.
Here.
Mayor Francis.
Here. Tony, would you lead us in the process, please?
I'd like to lead this issue through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under public announcements have one on August the 22nd, that'll be a Monday, council will have a special work session, and the topic at hand will be water allocation. So that's Monday, August 22nd, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Call to the public, Carrie?
Carrie Smith.
Is it Terry Smith or Carrie?
Carrie.
This is pretty good, two people with very close names. With Smith, it's not surprising, the first it is. Thank you. I'm Carrie Smith, Cape Creek resident, and I'm here, first of all, before discussing an issue, to thank you for your service. You all know that you do this for free. It's not an easy job to hear complaints from us and issues, and you have to listen patiently and resolve them. So before we get into the election season full bore, I want to thank you for all your service. That done, I want to raise an issue that is a general issue with respect to the information that you receive from a part of the town staff, the planning staff. I listed in the notes that Carrie distributed some attributes from general literature on what planners, regional planners, are supposed to do. And to me, they suggest that planners are the analysts for the town. They're the ones that assemble the information to inform you about particular land use and other decisions that fall under the purview of planning. They are not advocates. In my opinion, our planning staff has too frequently served as advocates for particular decisions and not provided adequate analysis to you, and then making your decisions and your situation much more difficult. I picked one recent incident, which no doubt will come before you, to illustrate the problems. Landmark West Builders has proposed an apartment development at the north of the northeast corner of Cave Creek Road and Galloway Drive. I've attached a map at the back of this that shows the location. It's right near Stagecoach Village. Mr. Ken Madden, the head of the development firm that has proposed this, had a meeting for the affected citizens on July 14th and discussed the plans. Local residents and those who were there, and I was there, raised three issues: traffic and safety associated with this change in land use, water for the proposed development, and concerns about the effectiveness of the sewer system in light of frequent smells that we probably remember were in that neighborhood, associated with a variety of causes that were hard to detect. Mr. Madden assured those attending that when he presented the information to the town's planning staff, they said not, they said there were no particular issues. Now, those specific issues were not one that he raised, they were the ones that were raised by the citizens in attendance. So what I'd like to do is review a little bit of information that I was able to assemble in an hour or two on each of these issues. One that came up in particular was what would be the volume of traffic on Galloway Drive because of its unique position intersecting Cave Creek Road and the difficulty that's associated with-
Ten minutes left.
-making turns. I'm going to continue for another couple of seconds, and then I'll stop. If you look at the table on page two, it's easy to find from a nationally published document that the Institution of Transportation, Institute of Transportation Engineers puts out on counts that you can expect from different land uses. A reallocation of that land use from residential to apartments increases the traffic flow on that road by 10 times, and the possible safety implications because of left turns to reach Scottsdale Drive and Tom Darlington extremely large. The second issue is water. The mayor has identified that in his morning meetings, and it raises significant issues with respect to what we have left of our water. And I've summarized data that's in the public domain and attached the sources of that information at the back. It's certainly not a surprise to anyone. The last issue is sewers, and no one could resolve that, but I would hope that the planning staff would pay attention to that. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Carrie?
Terry Smith, Cape Creek resident, I think most of you know that. Mayor, council, I'm here like I have been many, many, and too many times before, concerning the west side, the way we've been treated, our water situation, and I don't know if you're aware of it, we've had another fire. That makes three fires in our neighborhood since the water line and the fire hydrants have been put in. This brings up tremendous health and safety risk. The town council, in my opinion, is very, very liable. We have gotten notice the last time. In this last fire, the fire trucks came out, we have numerous pictures of them hooking hoses up to a fire hydrant that has no water and rolling hoses down driveways, wasting time while a house burns, okay? We have, well, I've already said that it's water in that water, in that line with the firewater, and also water for our residents is a health and safety issue. We, as residents in the town of Cave Creek, have paid developmental fees for our water, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars amongst all of us, and the town refuses to put out any money to get us our water. We were told the last meeting that we should have our water, and they're given a date of September. September is two months away, okay? I called Mr. Mark Staff of the Cape Cohava Springs Development a few days ago. I said, "Mark, how's things going?" He said, "Oh, you know, like, about the same." I said, "What about water getting in the lines by September?" And over the phone, there was a little chuckle, like, "That would be nice." That means there is not going to be water from Cohava Springs in those lines by September. We know as residents, and we know what the town has been saying, "Oh, we don't own the water line." That water line has been there, and that water line has been available for the town to take it over for years. Cohava Springs will turn it over to the town anytime. The town has refused to do it because there's a 300-foot section of water line that is four inches, not eight inches, and it has to be increased, and that's going to cost money. Money that the town does not want to pay for and give to the west side residents. We have been and are the stepchildren, ugly stepchildren of this town, and we're fed up with it. We have got together, and you'll see tonight, these are just some of the residents, and we've got together and we've decided that we have drawn a line in the sand. The line in the sand is September 30th for having water in the line so that we are able to hook up for our residences and we're able to have fire, water for fires in our neighborhood. Instead of just letting houses burn, we, as residents of this town, deserve that. This town has money for what it wants. It has money for horses sitting on, down on Cave Creek Road. It has money for medians. It has money for all kinds of different things. It does not have money for west side residents, and this is going to come to an end. We have talked to and have two law firms that are chomping at the bit, and if we do not have water by September 30th, we are going to enact and have a lawsuit against the town, and we are going to pursue it. We all, as residents in the west side that would be serviced by this line, have losses, insurance and losses because we've had to have water hauled in, it's very expensive rates, different things. That is not what the law firms are looking at. They are looking at what they call punitive damages, and we explain to them what, how we have been treated with roads, trails, and the like from the town, and they are ready and willing to jump on it, and they are hungry.
Three minutes.
But we are saying that September 30th is the line that we're drawing in the sand. I guess that's about it, and I hope the council hears us. You're going to see several people tonight. We already have, well, we got 12 residents that have signed up to go on to the lawsuit. We project to have over 30 at the time, by the end of September, when we be filing a suit against the town. Thank you.[706.42][706.42](Applause).
I'm mayor and council. I'm Kathy Smith, I'm a resident. And in 2004 is when I started building four homes, and I paid the impact fees for all four homes at that time. And it, I just looked up to see what an impact fee is described, and it says it's a one-time fee for new construction and that the new resident is, for their impact, and that was in parentheses, and this fee is imposed by the local town or government to defray the cost of growth or the impact that my building would be on it. And it said, "For vital services." And it lists water and sewer hookups, ambulance and fire services, roads, parks and schools. Well, we don't have any of those amenities. I guess, well, we don't have the ambulance and fire service, of course, and I just purchased that. That is an additional $340 for each one of my houses that I have to have on top, you know, for rural metro, on top of my normal insurance that covers my homes. And it's really frustrating. The fire that happened on my road was on the 27th of July. Very, very scary. And it was, it was so sad to see these firemen running and attaching the hose to an empty fire hydrant, which is right at the end of our road. And, I mean, it's not comical, it was just sad, and everybody goes, "Huh." And they were surprised that there was no water. But the week before, on July 20th, I called the town twice, and I was questioning about when we would get water, because I'm having to have it trucked in. And it's so costly, and it's so frustrating, and I kept thinking, "Okay, I'm not going to advance my system because we're having water by September, as was promised at our last meeting." But it's not going to come to be, so I had to make the decision to go ahead and develop my sources more, just so we could survive with our water. But anyway, on July 20th, I left a message for Luke, and I think his name was Townsend, after I talked to the first person, that said they had no plans currently for water in our area. And so Luke returned my call the following day, and he said, "No." He said, "The planning from the town has absolutely no plans for water at this time." And he gave me Mark, whatever, SDOPP's number, or I think that's what it was-
Three minutes.
...for me to call to see when they would be providing water for the Cave Creek residents. I just, I was very, very disappointed. Thank you.
Gary Becker?
Gary Becker, also a west side resident. I've spoken before this town council many, many times over the last, I guess, six or seven years. Same purpose obviously is to see where this town was going to go in supplying water for the west side. As we were here the last time, mayor, and I think a couple other town council members had promised us that they were going to personally look into this and make something happen. Whether with all Cohava Springs involvement, we were going to have water by September. So we sit here today again, empty, empty words, empty promises. So, very disappointing. Again, I am in a situation where I have to haul a lot of water because of my business, and it's incredibly frustrating, to say the least, to have to come before a committee like this time and time again, and just hear words, and the lack of your concern over us on the west side is really disturbing, as elected officials. I mean, you're here to serve us, we appreciate your time and efforts, but to have all words and no action from this council so many times is incredibly frustrating. I implore you guys to make something happen by September 30th. As Terry Smith had mentioned, we are committed, and we will follow through on our lawsuit actions here. And we're even pursuing the possibilities and looking at the possibilities of individual lawsuits against each and every one of you personally. And so we're pursuing that avenue as well. Thank you for your time.
Rick McDougall?
Hi, I'm Rick McDougall, I'm a west side resident. I live at 40480 on North 26th Street, and I wanted to recap a little bit about the fire that I recall most for me and my family, but the house right behind us at 40440 burnt down, I think about eight months ago. We heard our dog barking in the middle of the night, and woke up and looked out my window, and I saw flames shooting up way into the air. The house had caught on fire, and there was four fire trucks, ambulances in the street out front, and they were all parked. There was no water. They were waiting on a, on a water truck to show up so they could hook up to one of the fire trucks, so they could pump water down the driveway to this truck, to this house, I'm sorry. And finally, they got some water in there, and they slowly all stood around and watched this house burn to the ground. And now it's in the back behind my house, it's got a big fence around it, and it's parked to the ground. They just put a fence around it, and that scared the hell out of me that night, and I'm scared now of what's going to happen. There's, when Terry called the other day and said, "Well, this house is also caught on fire," so I just want to amplify this, and I'm afraid for my family, I'm afraid for our residents, and I really urge you to do something. I would stand behind this lawsuit financially if necessary, or whatever it takes, and I really urge you to do something quickly, because this is not a matter of money, this is a matter of safety, and it's urgent to take care of the people paying taxes in West Cape Creek. Thank you for your time.[1149.13][1149.13](Applause).
Steve Grimes?
Good evening, my name is Janet Becker. I live on the west side. I want to greet you all. I have to ask you a question. Have you ever turned on a water faucet to get a drink of water, or to wash your dishes, or to do laundry, and there's no water? Well, that has happened to me numerous times, and it's a scary feeling, and I wish it wouldn't happen to me anymore, but my husband has to haul water because our wells are dry, and after this recent fire, I am terrified. As a little girl, I was in a house fire, and I grew up in Upper Michigan, and I still remember that day, I was terrified. And to this day, I am just really scared. I mean, we don't have enough smoke lamps in our home, but please, please, give us water. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Tamara Smith, I'm also a west side resident. I just basically agree with all of what they're saying. I've been out there since 1995, and, you know, we're waiting, we're tired of waiting. And like she said, it's scary when you go and turn on your faucet and there's no water, because the truck hasn't been out yet. It's a continual, you've got to keep on top of that every day. Look, check your water, make sure that you have enough, make sure you know that, you know, you're not going to be without, because you guys can't seem to give it to us. So, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name's Harold Shell, and I'm a resident on the west side also, with all these fine people. I concur with everything that they've said, but I'm going to back it up with, I'm a retired firefighter, and I know what it takes to put out a house fire. One engine company carries 500 gallons of water, that's not nearly enough. So anytime a fire truck comes there by itself, it's not going to put out a house fire. The thing I want to talk about real quickly, if I can, if I can muster up all the words, is that the, it's not only the water supply that we are lacking on the west side, and actually all over Cave Creek, because you saw that when the Buffalo ship burned, it depleted all of the water in the entire town for a matter of hours. There was no water for anybody, and you all know that, I'm sure. The other thing is, the contract that you supposedly have in the general plan on page 46 shows that there is a mutual aid agreement with rural metro, with other surrounding fire departments. That is not true. There is no mutual aid agreement at all. I talked to the fire chief at Daisy Mountain today, and he says, "We have a contractual agreement." So when rural metro calls and says, "Oh, we can't make it to that call, could you take it for us?" Daisy Mountain charges rural metro, and then rural metro turns around and charges the homeowners. So what you have in your general plan is incorrect, so I would suggest you correct that before it's going to the boat. It says, "Currently, a mutual response agreement exists between rural metro, Daisy Mountain, the city of Phoenix, and the city of Scottsdale for fire protection." That is not true, and you can call those cities and verify that. Thank you very much.
Hello, mayor, council. My name's Frank Brannon, I live on the west side. I live right next to that house that burned, I guess, six months ago. If, without, we need more water because of, it was just a big safety thing. It could have been a real disaster with the winds blowing, especially now, when it's a lot hotter, and I think we need to get that line charged up and fixed, just for, that could have burned multiple houses if they couldn't have stopped that fire. Luckily, they did, so I back everything everyone else says, so thank you.
Good evening, I've been a Cave Creek resident for over 20 years, and I moved out on the west side about 16, 17 years ago. And when Cohava Springs started to go in, I was pretty excited because they promised us water, they promised us underground utilities, they promised they would remove the shrubbery from, from the right of way and replace it. None of those have happened. I offered to put their shrubbery on my part, on my property, and water. That wouldn't work, for some reason. So about three or four months later, I saw where they'd put the shrubbery, I go check on it. There's a guy there hauling it off. Big guy. I confronted him, I said, "Hey, you're hauling my shrubbery off?" "No, I got this from the town of Cave Creek." Where I want to go with this is, nothing has been done that has been promised us. I have a lot of horses on my property, I have to haul water to my horses, I can't leave the property because if I run out of water, my horses die. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Counsel, thank you. Never done this before. Terry Smith had me sign a paper. I guess that means that my name gets called. I'm a west side resident, you just heard from my husband, John. I look at it, it's a little different direction, I am also a realtor, and you cannot sell property where there's no water. You cannot sell property saying, "Oh, the city has the water line in. Look, there's water hydrants, they're going to bring us water." I know the city has promised several people not too distant past, they have bought property with the promise that you guys were going to deliver water. So a couple of places did sell with that promise. What's going to happen? They're going to come back on the people they bought the property from, they're going to come back on the realtors that sold them the property, "Where's my water?" Our land values, because we're on the west side, are about half of what they are on this side. And we have a prettier side than you guys do.[1673.92][1673.92](Laughter). How many of you have actually been over there and hiked around up there? So we deserve some respect on our side, please, please.
Diane McDougall?
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for hearing us. Moved to the west side about 12 years ago, and Terry called us the other day saying we're having a meeting that makes number three houses in 12 years that have burned down. The very first one I saw burn down, I was coming home from work one day, and I saw orange flames a short distance from my current house. And I talked to one of the first responders there, and I said, "Oh, my gosh, are the people okay?" And he goes, "Yeah, fortunately, nobody was home." And he also gave me a little insight, he says, "We'd love to put this fire out, but we don't have any water. So what we're doing is isolating and containing it, allowing it to burn down, and then we'll have enough water to extinguish whatever cinders are smoldering." The house right behind me went up in flames, and once again, they didn't have enough water. They were dependent on wire, on fire trucks, water trucks, I mean, to provide them water. My husband and I were told by first responders that it was in our best interest to, to leave the area, to evacuate, because our house is in grave danger of burning down from the embers that were flying up in the air from this house. So I had to call my parents, and we looked like refugees arriving at my parents' house because we were in danger of our own house catching on fire. So I stand 100% behind Mr. Terry Smith and the rest of the west side- So I stand 100% behind Mr. Terry Smith and the rest of the West Side residents in this ultimatum for water to come out to us. It's more than a structure. It's memories that are inside that house. You're losing photo albums. You're losing family heirlooms. Perhaps there's a table that you created, and your family gathered around for eating and talking about how your day went. And you spend quality time with your family. And that goes down in flames with your house. Again, it's not just a house that we're losing its memories. And please, get some water to us so we don't have to go with our actions of this lawsuit. Thank you very much.
Bobby Darzus?
This is going to be really hard for me. I'm the one whose house burned down. My name's Bobby Darzus. I lived in Terry Smith's house, and I lost pretty much everything and my cat. Luckily, I was home. I was working out of my house. And I am a lender. I know the problems in loaning out here. It's almost impossible. You cannot do loans except on most, on most types of loans that have hauled water. And they came out, rolled out the hoses. There was nothing they could do. Everything just went. I hardly have anything left. My cat's gone. And it's been really hard. Something has to change. This isn't going to work. You can't imagine what, what, excuse me. You can't imagine the trauma this creates. And the fear, had I not gone and woken up my neighbor, my cat probably would have lived. But I was afraid he was sleeping in the house next to me, next, adjoining, that he wouldn't make it out. So this is what's happening without water here. It's scary, and I see firsthand. It was just Wednesday. And thank God for all my friends here that came to my rescue and gave me place to live and stuffed clothing. And I didn't have anything. Try living like that. It's scary, and it's tough. We need our water, please. Thank you.
Jane Rhodes?
I'm Jane Rhodes, also on the West Side. We have water hauled in. There's not a day goes by that we don't think about water. We think about it all the time. My husband and I are busy people. But one or both of us has to always be aware of the level of water in our tanks, always. We have horses. 110-degree weather, the horses go without water. They get sick at best. At worst, they die. I have emergency plans for if there's a fire, which horses get chosen to go first? In what order? It's like choosing between your children as to who you save, because I don't know how we'll save them all. I was hopeful this spring, when the council, we had a fire there this spring, and you guys said, "Let's do what's right. We're going to get water to you people." And I was really excited about that. I was really hopeful. I'm not a litigious person. All my years of running businesses, I've always settled disputes without ever getting into lawsuits. I just heard about this one this afternoon. I don't know details. I don't know how I feel about it. I don't like doing things like that. I had already given up on you guys when I'd been going to the mayor's meetings and Peter saying, "Well, we're not going to do that. We can't spend money on that. We, we're not going to do that. Mark Staff has to do that." And it seems like the mayor and the town of, council have kind of backed away from pushing him to do that. So I've been interviewing candidates coming up. I thought, you know, maybe we'll get a whole new batch of people that'll give a rip. A handful really do. A handful do. And they say they're going to do something about it. The rest say, "Well, we don't have the money. You know, we ought to be right by you guys, but we don't have the money." Two candidates, one at the Town Hall Forum and one at the last forum, said something about, "Well, we don't even know if there's going to be enough people on the West Side that will sign up to make it worth our while to do this." That is spoken like people who have water. You don't know what it's like not to have water. Now, yeah, I'm certain that not all of these people over there will sign up on day one. Because some of them have wells, and they think they're doing fine. But they don't know that at some point, they will not be doing fine. So I don't know about this lawsuit. I don't want to go that way. I want to believe that you guys will act, and in the absence of you, gee, maybe the new candidates will. But I am so angry that people were saying, "Well, we don't even know if it's going to be worth our while." How many more houses have to burn before it is? How many more?
Three minutes? Thank you. Jenny Bott? No other speakers, ma'am.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Well, Mayor Vince, you're going to be gone. You're not going to worry about this no more.
Can we get your name for the record, please?
J.D. Smith, West Side. But I'll tell you what, I've had enough. I'm worse mad than that woman if I thought of being. I had to go out and buy a water truck because I haul so much water. And it's really a shame I have to provide my own fire protection. A lot of you guys are going to be gone, guarantee it. And I'm not going to back off because I'm going to go with that guy right over there. And I'm going to spend thousands of dollars to get this town down. Thank you.
Call of the public is still open?
Hi, I'm Tom Kinsella. My wife and I live out on North 26th Street. We lived there about two years. I can honestly say before that we'd never heard the expression, "It's just water until you don't have any." But I think the point is that, you know, water's one thing, but now it's a, it's a safety, it's a life issue out there. I'll keep this short. I think, you know, look every one of you in the eye and ask you to do the right thing. You know, for your fellow Cave Creekers, please do the right thing. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council. My name's John Kratz. I'm the fire chief up here. And I'd like to set some of the records straight. I, Bobby, I was there. I felt your sadness. We did everything we could. I did the cat hid, and we just couldn't find it. Fires come in different sizes. If it's a small fire initially, like at her house, we can put them out. All the water in the world wouldn't have put out the fire that happened months ago over, uh, 27th. It just doesn't matter. When a house is fully involved, then all we can do is just sit back and throw water at it, like we did at the Buffalo Chip. So I'm not saying we don't want the water, because every fireman would like a fire hydrant every 100 feet on every street in the town. But I don't want you to get it, to get the impression that just because there's a fire hydrant there, we're going to be able to put a house out that's fully involved. It just doesn't happen. A little more to set the record straight. Rural Metro and Daisy Mountain have an automatic mutual aid agreement, one mile in, one mile out. Now, you're on the edge of that. It's a computerized system. Then we have to ask. But a call comes in, in that area, it's automatic. Another slight correction, all of our fire trucks carry at least 750 to 1,000 gallons of water. You can flow a fair amount of water. And in the case of Bobby's house, one fire truck, that's enough water to put it out, or at least to slow the progression of the fire down. However, it still would be wonderful to have been able to use that fire hydrant that was right on the corner of the street. Thank you.
Call of the public is still open? Okay, earlier I announced that we were going to have a special council work session on Monday, August the 22nd, to do with water allocation. Carrie, I'd like you to reschedule that. Make that a special council meeting to deal a single item agenda, this particular item. Legal, prepare everything. It gives you three weeks. Prepare everything that has to be prepared. Town manager, advise Mr. Staff what council is doing. We're either going to approve to do, or we're going to deny to do, one or the other. But we're going to move, and we're going to spend the money. And then Mr. Staff is going to reimburse us. Okay?
Can I just say something? I thought that's what we were doing anyway.
We were waiting until September. But I don't even want to wait until September. Next Monday, August the 22nd. Okay, consent, single item, the approval of the July 18th regular council meeting minutes, motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, counsel. Town manager, did you have any report to give? No. On to the general agenda items. There are two this evening. This is a presentation by the town manager and Tony Geiger, Chair of the Water Advisory Committee on the Cave Creek Town Manager Rate Study Group and Discussions with Town Council.
Mayor and council, myself and Tony Geiger, Chairman of the WAC Committees. As you know, approving the budget to do a rate city, forming a group to look at those issues. And Mr. Geiger will have a short presentation for you on this.
Can I, can we wait for the mayor to return before you?
Absolutely.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, just wait until Vince gets back.
Okay.
They don't have a rope out there, do they?
No, it's because they've got guns. They're licensed to carry them.
Well, that was your dead mind for when we were going to, what we're talking about now.
Why don't you take a short recess until Vince returns? Five minutes, whatever it is.
To reiterate, number one is the presentation by the town manager and Tony Geiger, the Chair of the Water Advisory Committee, also known as WAC, by the way, on the Cave Creek Town Manager's Rate Study Group and Discussion with Town Council. Town manager, you want to start? Tony, would you like to start?
Start. Mayor Francia, Vice Mayor Lamar, members of the council. Next slide, please. So during the May 16th Town Council meeting, the Water Advisory Committee made a presentation on various areas of study that we wanted to look to in the future. They involved water supply, operation and maintenance of the utility, and conservation. At the end of that presentation, the council approved a couple of areas of study, and one of those was a study of utility rates. I want to start off by acknowledging, we know that water and sewer rates are a very sensitive topic. People take it very seriously. And it's important we look at this in the right manner. This presentation is intended to spell out the following. Why is this study important? Process that will be employed? The benefits to all stakeholders of conducting this exercise? And finally, what we hope to achieve? Next slide, please. Why a rate study? Over the past three years, the Water Advisory Committee, working with town staff, has come up with several initiatives that will make our utility more reliable, save money over the long term, and put the town in a better position to manage this critical resource during a time of serious drought. A few initiatives have been pursued and implemented, but several with the greatest impact have not been, due to budget cuts impacting staff and available resources. Some of these critical initiatives include, but are not limited to, a comprehensive preventive maintenance program. If we do this correctly, this program can save us tens of thousands, if not more, dollars per year by not having to do emergency repairs with new equipment versus just routine maintenance. We find ourselves having pumps go out, critical equipment going down from lack of maintenance, and we spend multiples of what it would cost to do the maintenance to buy new. Next slide, please. Benchmarking our utilities' operation and maintenance and overhead costs versus like utilities to see if we are spending too much or too little in any area. Are we deferring maintenance due to inadequate budget dollars, potentially setting ourselves up for major problems down the road? You can drive your car with no problem for 25,000 or 30,000 miles without changing the oil. And then it's broken, and you get to buy a new engine. Looking at technology and equipment that can potentially save tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in power costs. Unable to get to it, can't afford to buy the equipment. And also, pursuing projects can help the town be prepared for the impact of the drought on our water supply. The rate study will help us better understand where we are financially and operationally as a utility, and help us develop a range of rate options the council can use to direct the utility in the future. Next slide, please. The rate study process. How are we going to do this? The town manager's group is going to consist of the town manager, the finance manager, and our town utility manager, plus four citizens. The citizens have been selected based on their financial acumen and analytical skills, knowledge of our water utility and its major issues, and/or experience in government affairs, including ratemaking. The members are Paul Elkema, a retired educational professional, and a member of the Cave Creek Board of Adjustment; myself; Bob Morris, a retired Fortune 50 executive with vast experience in engineering and financial analysis; and Dr. Kerry Smith, a professor of economics, a sustainability scientist with extensive experience in water resource management and utility regulation. Next slide, please. The first task this group will be to develop the request for proposal for a rate study consultant. It's critical that significant work be done at the front end of this process. Quite frankly, this is going to require an unprecedented level of cooperation between town staff, the manager's study group, and the Water Advisory Committee. We must start with a solid baseline of costs to build upon. So we're going to have to look at our accounting practices, industry standard, our overhead expenses allocated correctly, our recruiting monies correctly for major maintenance of equipment, like painting tanks, like redoing the water treatment plant filters. Money should be identified and be accrued every year. We don't know if we're doing that or not. So this isn't going to be easy. And we either can have the experts on our group do it, or we can pay a consultant to do it. But if we don't do it, and establish a baseline of costs and expenses we all agree upon, I would expect we'd get a lot of pushback from the citizens if we were to come to them and ask for more money. We have to justify it. To ensure the best possible outcome, the group will develop a rigorously detailed scope of work with specific deliverables required of the chosen consultant. The Water Advisory Committee has already submitted a list of priorities to the rate study group to add an extra set of eyes, and they will take up the discussion in their monthly meetings. Our objective is to maximize Our objective is to maximize our chances of getting a fair bid that meets our needs and eliminates the need for any potential expensive extras after the contract is signed. The rate study group will meet at least two times prior to the issuance of the request for proposals, and the meetings will be conducted during the day and open to the public. Once the request for proposals is complete, it will be reviewed by the Water Advisory Committee prior to being issued. Next slide, please. The public will have opportunities to provide input along the way by attending rate study group meetings, water advisory committee meetings, as well as contacting group members or town staff. We also plan to send out news releases and summaries of the meetings to the local papers, bloggers, et cetera. So as the process progresses, we will provide updates to the citizenry and the council, of course. We do not intend to do a giant information dump four months into this thing. We want to keep people informed as we go. Rate study group will remain in place throughout the entire process and will be present at all review meetings, consultant presentations, and interactions. Additional public group meetings will be scheduled as required to inform the citizenry of milestones achieved and when new information is available. The final product developed by the rate study group will be reviewed by the Water Advisory Committee prior to being issued. Next slide, please. The benefits of this approach. Number one, transparency. All rate study group and water advisory committees meetings will be open to the public. All stakeholders in the utility will be able to see and understand where we are financially and operationally with our utilities, and what options and corresponding trade-offs we have available to us. Second benefit, better control over the rate study consultant. This process will make it much more likely that we get the specific assistance we need in evaluating our utility and rates versus standard consultant boilerplate. We have a unique utility with unique challenges. The approach outlined will help us ensure we avoid some of the less than satisfactory outcomes we've had with prior consultants. See waterworks engineers and the asset plan, see Tishler vice and the capacity charges. And finally, de-politicizes the process. That's a tough one in Cave Creek. Utility rates are a very sensitive topic. We have attempted to create a process that allows us to generate the facts of our utility's financial and operational situation. The committee will seek to develop information that the vast majority of stakeholders can agree is accurate. One of the things I heard at one of the candidate forums was how hard it is to get the facts of a situation. You guys are presented with a range of problems and challenges. You can't be expected to be experts in all of it. You have to have good information. This process will give us that information. Last slide, please. So what we hope to achieve? Well, hopefully, we'll end up with a detailed understanding of where we are with our utilities from our operational and financial standpoint. This is going to be out of the box for some folks and there's probably going to be, you know, some uncomfortable staff members along the way, but it's the right thing to do for the town. We will have benchmarked our utilities to better understand how we stack up against other utilities, and key metrics, including but not limited to O and M expenses, deferred maintenance, overhead, we don't know. Too much, too little, we don't know where we're at. So once we have a better understanding of where we are, we will then be able to build a range of detailed policy and rate options based upon agreed-upon facts that the council can use to address our current challenges and plan for the future of our town's water and wastewater utilities. And finally, the first group, the study group meeting is this Wednesday at 1:00 in this building. Any questions?
The question may be premature. Do you have a sense of timeline, Tony, as to when the RFP might be?
I mean, I think probably a couple of months, Peter, realistically, to get that put together. I think it's really important to get a lot of work done upfront.
So you're saying 60 days?
Estimate is 60 days, yes.
That's 60 days.
I said more than two meetings. There's probably four to six.
But I'll say this.
Ken, I'll have many questions, but not now.
Did you say four to six?
No, four to six meetings. He said, I mean, I just, I don't see it.
Yeah, we won't get it done in two. And as far as 60 days, we'll attempt to do it in 60 days, but this is something, and if we got to take an extra 30 days to get it right, we need to take an extra 30 days to get it right.
How about a drop dead date? You're the experts.
End of the year? I mean, that's drop dead, you know what I mean?
I want it before I'm off this council because I don't want it to be political.
That's why we have not considered anything to do with the election. That's why we're just going to do the job. We're going to, we've got to laundry a whole single spade sheet of issues that we need to understand. Now, if we can get through some of these base cost issues quickly, then we'll go faster. If we have to slog through reams of data to make sure we all agree that it's right, then we'll take our time. Because the other option is to stick it in the RFP and let the consultant do it, and pay them hundreds of dollars an hour to do something we should be able to do ourselves.
You're lucky you don't live here.
I wish I did.
Do you have any questions from the council?
None.
Councilman Barch, and then Vice Mayor.
You've got quite a talented group there. I've met with you on several occasions. My request for the town managers is to make sure that this goes through the proper processes that we should be going through. And for example, policy is largely set by the council. We do so with our budget. So we, these ideas have to come to the council so that the council can make the decisions that we have to make.
Mayor and council, my only, I think it's a great presentation. My only concern is sometimes it's biting off a huge amount of stuff that's, I don't need for the rate study, per se. Some of it might be more policy. So my job is, and I, the only job is, to make sure we keep it focused to what we need, what's been approved. Anything changes in policy would come from the council itself.
We're just trying to gather the information and give you, based on the facts on the ground, financially and operationally of the utilities, here's are some of the choices that you have and the trade-offs and the costs you set the policies. But I don't think you want to just pull the policies out of thin air. I think you want something that you can work with and take from.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Take your time when you need to take your time and do it right. This is our most valuable asset. There is a lot of analysis here. A lot of what you're going to be studying is ancillary, but absolutely necessary to the rate study. And you need to make it as broad as you can so that once, once, and hopefully for all, we have a baseline for where we're at, what we need to do, and how much it's going to cost, and how we can go about running our water and utility company like a business. So, you know, it's garbage in, garbage out, or it's good analysis in and results. And, you know, nobody likes to invest these days. The only way you ever get ahead is if you use your brains, you use the money you have, you invest it properly, do the proper analysis, you put garbage, you know, you put garbage in, you've got the same problem five years from now, or a worse problem. So it's time that we did this. And I'm, I'm very, very happy to see this again. I'm glad you're moving forward. I want you to do it right. And if you have any problems doing it right, if there's any rustles in the road, while I'm still here, bring it to council.
Thank you.
Because we need to get this right.
I agree.
At the same time, we're dovetailing the capital improvement project planning at the same time. Those are the two key components we need to look at when we look at the restructuring for next year, rate study and the CIP.
Councilman Barch?
My comment is, first of all, I want to compliment you guys for the committee you put together. That's a very strong committee, and I don't want it rushed either. What I want to make sure is I'm worried about what we heard tonight, and we need to make sure that certain things come to this council quickly, because we can't have an uncharged line in this town that has hydrants on it. That's just unacceptable. But what you guys have as committee is fantastic.
Thank you.
Tony, looking at the talent that you've assembled here for this, is it really necessary after you've got all the data to go out to somebody else for, for more work?
I think that the rate study consultant will help us understand best practices and have probably access to a lot more information. If we try to hire a consultant to do all this, it would be, it couldn't pay for it. But I think if we do some of this lead work upfront, hand to the potential consultant, here's what we need, we'll end up with a much better result. I really do.
I just was, was impressed with, with what I'm reading here and knowing some of the people that are involved in that.
Yeah, we've got a good group. I can tell you, if you had to hire this group, it'd probably cost you eight, 10 grand a day.
Now, let's not, let's not give them a big hit now.
No, I'm just, that's, that's for real. That's really what it is.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Yeah, it's real.
Yeah, okay, that's why I asked the question. All right, thank you.
There are some strong personalities in that group.
And our job is to manage, which we need to keep going forward, and we'll, we'll get that done. We will get that, it has to get done.
Right, thank you.
Councilman Francia?
And I agree with everything that has been said. If you take the very last page and put in, instead of what we hope to achieve, if you would put in what we will achieve. I like, you don't, let's not hope. I think after all the talent, our expectation is very high, and I think you will achieve it. And I think that you'll have the documentation so that false narratives will have a difficult time coming out with why it won't work.
There isn't going to be any false narratives, and I would only say, your expectations aren't any higher than mine.
Good. Thank you.
Councilman Esser?
Tony, I guess my concerns, and I've gone through this a couple of times, spent a couple of hours on it. When are we going to know what the cost is? If I read this correctly, this experienced group is going to come up with an RFP, you're going to send it out, and you're going to do the picking, and we're going to pay for it.
No, 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 no. We're going to develop an RFP between the town staff and our citizens group. So we'll scope out of the work we want, the deliverals we want. There's six to eight potential bidders.
Will we get to see all of those bidders?
You folks will make the final decision who we bid it out to.
They will be ranked based on different factors, okay?
We're paying the tab.
Absolutely.
My question was, will we get to see the bidders?
That's the town manager.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yes, I, we're going to develop the RFP, we're going to collect the RFP, the respondents, I'm going to say there's six, we'll rank them, but you can look at all six, and you folks will make the final decision on what, for whom we go with.
There'll be no money, no town money spent until you are reviewing and the council approves a chosen consultant. All the work we're going to do upfront is no.
I don't see that in here.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
It's a given.
I try to keep my presentations to five minutes or less.
You need to spend $500 to $1,000. That's, we'll do that, I mean, but the real money's you folks.
Well, it's on you, Peter. It's your committee.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'd like to.
Tony, thank you. There is published comment on agenda item number one. The council is taking no action, but a presentation. Does anyone wish to comment? Okay, let me move it along quickly. Just one thing, on behalf of the council, I want to thank those who are staff and citizens and neighbors who have volunteered to be on this committee. Thank you so much. The last of the items, council discussion. And first reading of ordinance number 2016-07, amending the Cave Creek Town Code Title 13, General Offenses, Section 130.08, General Offenses, Obstruction of Streets, Town Manager.
Mayor and council, as of late, we have had a situation with the folks that have been maybe causing some concern about obstruction of the roadways. Town marshal was concerned that what we had for the ordinance wasn't sufficient. He was concerned about that. We actually had a discussion with the town attorney. He recommended some language to tighten it up for both the sheriff's office and for the town marshal to enforce that. I see more as a housekeeping and public safety issue as people are stepping onto the roadway or working next to the roadway that has created some concerns for us. So I see this as just giving a little more teeth, a little more authority to the town marshal to correct that situation.
This is really a result of Gilbert's failed efforts that went to the air of the US Supreme Court. It has come back to haunt governments across the nation. There is a First Amendment here in the United States. In the past, law enforcement would police up panhandlers and day labors, but they have First Amendment rights, and so there are restrictions on what you can do. The marshal was concerned that your statute, your ordinance, wasn't precise enough to really look at things that can be policed up, like endangering vehicular or pedestrian traffic safety. So we added that. That would pass muster in the Ninth Circuit. This is to allow your marshal to take care, to, to, to police up public health and safety, public safety in the right way.
Questions from council?
Only one.
Councilman Esser?
It's probably for, for the attorney. Does this include encroachments that are existing in the right way?
You, that's already covered, but you mean, you mean like physical?
Physical.
Yeah, that is, yeah, that's already a statute.
Like water tanks and that kind of?
Yes, sir. They don't have First Amendment rights.
No, but they kill people.
Yes, sir.
There is, there is probably comment on this item? Okay, let me bring it back to council. Mayor? Yes, Councilman Barch?
I move to give first reading, ordinance 2016-07, an ordinance to the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek Town Code Title 13, General Offenses, Section 130.08, General Offenses, Obstruction of Streets.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, Councilman Barch?
I was here when we did this originally, and this was, we were concerned at the time, and I'm glad that you've tightened it up and made it where it's, we'll hold muster with our friends in the Ninth Circuit Court in the beautiful Bay Area of California.
Love the Ninth Circuit.
Yeah, so did my old friend Sam Lewis.
Councilman Barch, do you have the second?
That was, my opinion was, when I saw that come out, I was not on the council, but when I saw that, it worried me that our time, we needed something, and I'm really glad we're going to do this.
Anything else from council? I'll go to the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Motion to adjourn? Thank you, council. Counselor and town manager, if you could give me one minute?